My mood.
It's because he's the senior guy.
She says she's representing another.
I don't know. Yeah.
Good night.
Yeah.
You want to call anybody?
We're early. Push it in.
Push it in.
Push it in towards your left foot and lock it from the right.
Okay. Like five seconds. Ron, you ready? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is December 13, 2017. The meeting is being held in the new Springfield Township building. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who've placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute of the township. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Home in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Home opposed, say nay. Please record unanimously vote. And we are in full complement tonight. The Board of Commissioners will be conducting a budget hearing later this evening. Any questions or comments related to the preliminary 2018 budget shall be presented at the budget hearing. Following the budget hearing, the Board of Commissioners will conduct a public meeting to adopt the 2018 budget and close the business affairs of the township for 2017. So the way, let me just give you the roadmap for the way this meeting, where you probably have the agenda here. And we will go through all but the last two items. First, we'll have public comment, and then we have the presentation, which is the first item. Then we will go through the next items, all the way through number 13. Then we will have a budget hearing, and you'll be able to comment on the budget at that point. And then we will discuss the budget. And before the budget hearing, we will actually close the December meeting and open the hearing. We have to jump through these hoops. Then we will close the budget hearing. That moves us to number 15, the budget adoption. And we will reopen to vote on the budget, and then there are four or five other housekeeping items that have to be done because it's the last meeting of the year. So that, there are actually three different meetings going on, and there will be four different chances for public comment. One in one moment, one at the beginning of the budget hearing, one at the beginning of the budget adoption, and the other, when's the other? At the end of 13 or the end of the whole thing? The final public? Well, we'll do the other at the end of the whole thing because otherwise we're having back-to-backs. So that said, check my script. Yes, the board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, with the exception of the budget, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. Well, I've been through that. So if, do we have any public comment for this period? Just state your name and address, please.
Jane Markie, 15 Brookside Road. Do you want to hand her the mic?
Can you hand her the mic, maybe, Jane, or I don't want to imposition her? You're putting us to the test, and you're our very first person. That's good. We'll figure it out.
You want to surprise her.
That's right.
Okay. Ready? My name is Jane Markie. I live at 15 Brookside Road. I'm presenting you with a petition of signatures from the residents requesting that you stop the allowed parking on Bethlehem Pike and Brookside Road. This parking is a huge safety concern for adults and children alike. Children have to go to school into the street and to enter the school bus and again step into the street after the school because of the parked cars on Bethlehem Pike. In leaving Brookside Road, adults cannot see cars going in either direction on Bethlehem Pike because the parked cars block the view. You need to inch out to see when it's safe to leave. Almost everyone I talked to has had a close call when trying to leave. This is a safety concern that cannot be swept onto the rug. In the winter, when the snow arrives, the cars parked there also cause another problem with snowplows. Again, this will cause problems with the cars trying to inch out with the dangers of cars speeding and tires skidding in the snow. I spoke to someone at PennDOT, and he agrees that parking should not be there. PennDOT never approved this. Brookside Road is a cul-de-sac. There's only one way in and one way out. There is no other route to take. If the allowed parking is removed and no parking signs are posted, the police department has to issue tickets to illegally park cars. We need the police to enforce this. This has to be taken care of before it's too late. Don't let something tragic happen before parking is removed. Please make safety your number one concern.
Okay. Thank you.
I have the question.
Okay, well, we can take that. Can we just, traffic safety, to take a look at that?
Yes.
So we will have them do an investigation and report back to us. Thank you. Do we have any, do we have any other public comment at this time?
How you doing? Bob Gillies, 213 Woods Road. First and foremost, I'd like to say what a great facility we have. It's taken over 20 years, 10 separate boards and various volunteer committees to make this come to fruition. It's great to see. I have a topic that's not on the agenda for tonight, but it's a topic that seems to be hampering the township a bit. I have some personal experience with my son, but it has to do with absentee ballots and how we, as a township, can work to the county to try to resolve what seems to be a chronic issue in the township. I mean, my son, he's up at Penn State. Two years as freshman and sophomore year, he tried to have absentee ballots filled out, mailed them in. They never made it to Springfield Township to be counted. Appears that we have the same issue now, which is impacting an election pretty significantly or not, but we have three ballots that are in question, and I guess the people who are asking for the ballots to be looked at are not getting justice with the, or what they would opinion to be justice with the county. And then they're also getting opposition from, in this case, happens to be the Democratic Party, to even seeing those ballots. And I would like to know why the party would just not want to have those ballots counted or at least seen so that we can put this election to bed and move on as opposed to have it continue to go on in court. I don't know if you have an opinion on that or if you can enlighten it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to address it. I defer to the solicitor. Do we have the ability to change the county's rules on these?
No.
That is why we don't.
But we have, we have the ability to write a letter to the county, advise the county that Springfield has had a historical record of ballot issues, not enough ballots, you know, ballots not getting.
Well, we did the time you tried to challenge the 57 African-Americans for having bad stamps on there.
Excuse me?
You don't remember that?
I remember that there was a case.
Those people all got them in on time. You did not challenge the Republican ballots.
I.
You only challenged the African-American ballots who were Democrats.
I don't.
And I didn't hear any complaints about that.
Well, first of all, personally, I didn't challenge anything.
Okay.
Number one. Number two, I do recall that because I was a commissioner at the time.
Right.
And from what I understand was a specific person, happened to be you, went and had absentee ballots, filled out, helped people fill them out, and took them in possession and took them to the county yourself, which is, which was incorrect. And you were admonished by that, by the county.
I was not a party to the case.
Jeff, Jeff Hoffel.
I was not a party to the case.
Joe Hoffel.
I was, I was not a party to the case, Bob. You can make up whatever fact you want.
No, weren't there four ballots? Weren't you in a hearing at the county?
I was a witness at the hearing, but I was not a party to the case. I was not a felon, as you guys said.
I didn't say you were a felon. I said.
Well, the head of your party came here and said I was a felon.
I'm not here as a party.
Because you guys did not want these ballots counted, even though they were in on time.
Jeff.
Now they're in late, three ballots are in late.
Well, we don't know they're late.
And you want to change the rules because guess what? They're white, and they're Republicans, so they have a higher level of counting.
I had no idea.
We need to stay out of this.
I have no idea what color or what party anybody on any ballot is that you do is peculiar, but that's fine. All I want to know is, I came up here because we have a problem in a specific race right now, but I know from experience with my own son and several of his friends have tried to get their absentee ballots into the county. They filed them, they sent them from the, from State College, and they never made it to Springfield Township. Now, that's, was my son an anomaly? It doesn't appear to be. Now, the, you know, we want to go back and relitigate a case that you were involved and I was not, fine, but I do know that you were brought up to the county and a decision was made that four of the ballots were mishandled.
That's accurate.
Yeah, that's all I said. I'm not, I don't know why you got offensive with me, but that's beside the point.
But they were in on time. They weren't tampered with.
But they were mishandled.
Improper postage.
They were mishandled.
Right.
But that, you know.
And these were mishandled if they were, they haven't been received.
Well, I mean, if you want to relitigate.
I don't know, I don't know the facts of this case.
If you want to relitigate all the history of, of taking a county.
The township did not get involved in that case, and I don't think the township should get involved, nor do I know how we get involved. I don't think.
Well, all I'm asking is that you write a letter to the county and ask them why, if they can at least do the research to find out why absentee ballots are missing to the township. I would like to know is, is it an anomaly?
There have already been two lawsuits on this, and they've both been dismissed.
Is it an anomaly or does it happen often? I don't know.
If I was going to wait till my report, and I can address it frankly just for two points. One, with respect to, I have the county list of absentee ballots that was provided this time. Out of 196 ballots, absentee ballots that were throughout the township, only less than 199 were not, didn't make it back, the ballots made it back. So it was 51% of the absentee ballots in the entire township, according to their own records that I have. Now, they may have been updated after November 3rd, but in the case with Ward 6, and I'll get to that later. So 51% of the folks that asked for an absentee ballot were mailed an absentee ballot by the county, according to their own records, weren't returned. And I'll give you 25, 20%, either people showed up at the polls and pulled their ballots because they voted in person or didn't fill it out. The 51%, and in Ward 6, it was 60%. Five, three out of five. That's a big percentage. And then Ward 1, Mike out of the villa, I think it was 53, never made it back. Pete in Ward 4, I think 15 out of 17, never made it back. That's a pretty high percentage. And in Ward 7, there was a couple that did make it back. Ward 2, there was some that made. The overall percentage for the township is about 51%, according to the county's records. Now, we'll get it, we'll get into Ward 6 later, but that's a pretty high percentage. With respect to the three voters over in Ward 6 that you referred to as a particular dominion nation, they're senior citizens. As far as their race and authenticity, that, you've mentioned that, two happen to be Republican, one happens to be a Democrat. In fact, Bonnie Davis, our town's treasurer, followed up with the one that's missing to make sure she sent in her ballot. So it's not a partisan issue. It's a real issue, but I'll address that later during my report.
Okay. Well, thank you, Bob.
Yeah, I'd just like to know that we would do something to try to improve the absentee ballot situation. I'm sure Springfield isn't unique to it either, so it needs to be addressed.
This is the proper forum for that, then so be it.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment at this point? Okay, we'll have more later. Why don't we move into the agenda and we can turn it over to our special presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Township Manager. I'm not sure if Tom's still here, but thank you.
This is your word.
Thank you also. Good evening, everybody. We're here to talk specifically about one particular bridge that's part of the rapid bridge replacement project. Can you hear me now? There we go. Okay, good evening. I want to thank the Commissioners for inviting us here tonight to present the status of one of the bridges that's part of the rapid bridge replacement project. By a show of hands, I'm always interested because we invited some people here specifically about this bridge project. If you're here for that bridge project, can you just show me your hands? There you go. One, two, three, four, five. Five. That's fantastic. Well, thank you for coming out to listen to the status of this bridge. I heard one person say, before I started, I heard them say, what's a rapid bridge? What does that mean? Well, let me, let me tell you. Let me break it down for you, and bear with me because I'm going to hit you with some numbers. So we've been on this project for two and a half years, and I'll explain the project in a minute. Two and a half years of construction, we started replacing one of the 558 bridges in June 2015. Now, we've been working for two and a half years, and that's around 10 construction seasons. So there are around 22 working days per month of construction per month on average. So that's around 24 months we've been replacing these bridges since we started this project. And that gives us, if anybody's counting, that gives us 528 days. Now, we started this project in mid-2015, and we've replaced 381 bridges. Now, it's not quite one bridge one day, but it's pretty impressive that on one project we've managed to replace 381 structurally deficient bridges in Pennsylvania. So that's a rapid bridge for the person that I heard talking about there earlier. But we're not here to talk specifically about all those bridges. We're here to talk about the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge that crosses Sandy Run. So anyway, so my name's Rory McGlasson, and I work for Walsh Construction. I'm a Public Information Officer for Walsh Construction, and Walsh Construction is part of the joint venture construction team that are replacing these 558 bridges as part of PennDOT's Rapid Bridge Replacement Project. I'm not the only one here tonight that's representing the contractor and what PennDOT would call the development entity. I have Kevin Christ, who's a project manager for Walsh Construction, and Andrew Walker, who's a bridge engineer. This is, I don't know if you're aware of this, but this specific project is a public-private partnership. You might have heard this term in the news recently. It's a P3 project. So it's a partnership between PennDOT. Is anybody here from PennDOT tonight by chance? And the, and the private sector. Thanks. Thanks, James.
Jeffrey.
Jeffrey, sorry. So.
Yeah, I think you're okay.
So the private entity, the private entity is basically replacing these projects, replacing these bridges on behalf of the state. And this development entity is a consortium of different, different entities. So there is a financing arm, plenary, and Walsh Financing that makes up the financing. There's a design team, HDR, who's our engineered of record. As I alluded to, there is a contractors arm, Walsh and Granite, and that's a joint venture. What that means is there's two large contractors on the project. And there is also a maintenance side of this project. For each one of these bridges, a 25-year maintenance project. So we have Walsh Infrastructure Management, who are all part of this Plenary-Walsh Keystone Partnership. One of the bridges, as I alluded to, is the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge Replacement Project. Now I have your attention, so that's good. So we started scoping out this project, and we started our environmental outreach and everything that goes into this replacement back in 2015. So the main purpose of our meeting tonight is to bring you up to date and basically tell you what were the outcomes to some of the concerns since the last time you came out. Because we came out in 2015, early 2016, to present the original plans. We didn't come here, but we came to the old, older Springfield Township building. So that's the purpose, and I'm going to talk about some of those items. So where's the bridge? And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's in Ward 3. Correct? Okay. Okay. The bridge is, it's located in Springfield Township over Sandy Run on Pennsylvania Avenue, but the bridge actually traverses Upper Dublin Township, too. If you look on Pennsylvania Avenue up there, there's a shade there. So this project is actually, we did invite people from Upper Dublin, and we're obviously coordinating with that township, too, but I just wanted to let you know that this bridge overlaps, as you can see on the Township Municipal border there. So what were some of the concerns at the last meeting? Well, we had some minor concerns about the traffic during construction. We had some concerns that were brought to our attention about what potentially could you do as it relates to the aesthetic design of the bridge. We had some concerns about an adjacent land development that's on the other side. And we also had some concerns brought to our attention about, from the Whisthicken watershed, about the preserve and how were we going to disturb that potentially, and if so, what kind of restoration would occur. So let me go over some of those and how they were addressed. So we'll start with the traffic during construction. So when we originally looked at the traffic and the maintenance and protection of traffic for this project, we, originally we were going to do what we call half-whiff construction, where you stage the bridge and where there's one lane of alternating traffic. When we looked at that, that wasn't the greatest plan. So what we're going to do is we're going to install a temporary roadway or a temporary runaround, is what, is how we would call it. Essentially, two lanes of traffic on a temporary bridge, and that'll be for regular vehicular traffic. I just want to point out that school buses can use that and fire engines can use it, too. However, tractor trailers have its own dedicated detour, and I'll talk about that, too, in a minute. So it's a six-mile truck detour. I do have the plans printed out over there, but that's specifically for tractor trailers. Now, the bridge construction timeframe itself, the bridge construction timeframe, when we start work on the new bridge, we have a tentative timeframe of May 2018 to September 2018. I use the word tentative because you can imagine replacing 381 bridges already and 558 bridges. It's, it's a fluid schedule, but we're cautiously optimistic that we can start this bridge construction in May 2018. We do have some incorporated utility work. There's sewer and water that we'll relocate. What I mean by that is we'll perform that when we install the temporary bridge, so we'll move that then. So you might see some construction activity in the area, but it's not the actual bridge replacement project. That might occur, Kevin, February, March, April. You might see there's phone lines being relocated, too, before we start work on the bridge. Aesthetic issues. Okay, so this was brought to our attention also when we originally proposed our preliminary plans. Township Manager Berger, we coordinated quite, quite a lot about the aesthetics and what we could do potentially in terms of its form liner and such. So what we, what we are going to do, now that picture on the right is a, an example. It's not the final rendering for the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge, I just wanted to point that out. But essentially, the aesthetics that we're going to incorporate as part of this design for this bridge are basically designed to help it blend in, blend into the preserve and the historic area to which the bridge is located, is the overall purpose, and designed not to, not to have it stick out, essentially. The form liner will receive a rustic ash lapata. We have some renderings over there for those that want them. All the exposed areas of the bridge, so the barrier, the wing wall, the parapet, they'll all, it will receive a color stain which is close to the one you see there, and it'll match the surroundings. I know that Township Manager wanted us to, as best we could, match the Emlyn House and the area to which it is, which we'll try and do. And we'll have a field site meeting, as we do on these types of projects, to finalize that specific staining of the, excuse me, final staining. We'll do that in early 2018, Kevin. The keystone that you probably saw on some of the earlier pictures, it's a, it's a stamp and it's a keystone that we have on all of these rapid bridge replacement projects. Most of them are on the outside of the bridge. This one will actually have one on the inside of the parapet. So we had some concerns that were made, we were made aware of as it relates to an adjacent land development. Washington Manor, which I'm sure you're familiar with if you know where this bridge is. We've been in coordination extensively with the builder, Sal Payone, about this. We held a, a field site meeting. Essentially, there's a, the development includes a new trail from the northeast to the southeast quadrant. The concern was, were we going to have some kind of impact with the trail? And if so, you know, how are we going to limit, limit that disturbance? Now, the, when we had the field site meeting, we surveyed it and we determined that it was outside of our limits of disturbance. And, but what we'll do is, we are going to install a protective orange fence around that as a visual deterrent to prevent any encroachment on the new trail. And last but certainly not, not least, in terms of our environmental concerns that were brought to our attention is the preserve, and like I alluded to, the amount of disturbance and restoration of that. So we need a temporary construction easement, obviously, to replace the bridge. And concerns were brought to our attention from the Whisthicken Valley watershed. So we met in, in February, I believe it was February 2017, on-site to, to investigate this, performed the landscaping survey with the Whisthicken Valley watershed and inside the limits of disturbance. Essentially, we went there and we counted how many trees would potentially be replaced, and we did that. And the long story short is, the state and the watershed agreed that they would do it, they would perform a restoration project. And John, I know that you're here, is there anything you want to add to that? We're on public comment and record. You've got more insight, obviously, into, into that.
Hello, my name's John Farah. I'm with the Whisthicken Valley Watershed Association, and I just want to actually talk a little bit about the partnership. It was our concerns, our mission is to protect the stream and the creek there, and Walsh Granite and PennDOT understood that. So we worked out a, an agreement where we will do the restoration work once the project is completed because we feel like we know the preserve, we'll be able to restore it how we feel it's fit. So we're really excited about that partnership, and we thank PennDOT for helping us out in protecting the stream.
Thanks, John. And we're obviously coordinating, and we'll continue to coordinate. In fact, we're going to produce a pamphlet for public distribution that'll feature some of the stewardship that John referred to there before we start construction. So the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge Project, it's one of five bridges that are part of this rapid bridge replacement project in Montgomery County. this rapid bridge replacement project in Montgomery County. The bridge you see there is, I wanted to show you a bridge that we did in the county. It's not going to look exactly like that bridge, as I alluded to. That bridge was replaced on Layfield Road in Upper Hanover. We replaced that slightly ahead of schedule in September of this year. As opposed to taking my business card and Kevin's business card and contacting us directly, we do have a dedicated website for this project. It's a fantastic resource. You can actually, what I like about it, you can go in there and hit the Bridges by County tab. You can jump right into Montgomery County. You can even jump right onto the PA Avenue Bridge, and it'll give you all the latest updates. You can see the maps, you can see the drawings, you can see the plans all up there. If you want to look at other bridges that are on this project, you can hit our bridge blog, where we update that on a daily basis. So that would be a fantastic resource. But like I said, for you and here and the commissioners, I'm your primary point of contact, Kevin as well. If you want to write down our phone number and our email addresses, please do. Kevin's with me tonight, if you have questions specific to the actual bridge and structure, we can talk about that, too. But I just wanted to give you a quick overview, and like I said, the main purpose was to basically give you an update on the outcomes from the concerns from our last meeting. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them from the commissioners and our general public.
Why would you put up a temporary bridge? Why wouldn't you just put a new bridge right next to it and forget about the tent? And not have to destroy it after you've finished it?
No, it's a good question. It's a good question. I mean, it's not all about the cost and the time and the schedule. I mean, the timing would be a lot longer for a staged bridge. But the main reason is, looking at the existing roadway on the bridge now, if we were to stage it, which is, like I said, one lane of alternating traffic, we believe and made a determination that there's a potential for the bridge, for the structural integrity of the bridge to be slightly compromised, and that was one of the main reasons we went with the runaround, as opposed to one lane open. Plus, right, plus the roadway alignment of the bridge wouldn't work either. Do you want to elaborate on that, Kevin?
Related to that, how much space we, at one curve, we didn't take a lot of land and put a temporary bridge. You didn't show that, how much area would you take down? Do you have any?
We have the impact plan over there. I can give you the specifics if you want to look at that later. I don't know off the top of my head. I mean, it's limited space in the easement, it's very limited. I mean, it's essentially a postage stamp, is what it is.
The bus needs to take the detour that tractor trailers take, or will we be on the?
Yeah, it depends on the size of the bus, and I'm pleased you're here, because a 40-foot transit, 25 miles per hour over the runaround, should be okay. We'll take a look at it, I'm not sure, but I think that the dedicated truck detour is probably for the safety and mobility of your customers, what you should be following. Yes. And like I said, I have the map over there, and we can go through that after I've given these formal remarks.
Is there any follow-up beyond the website? Do you have, like, email access?
Yes, we do, and I will be your primary person, so you can contact me on a regular basis, weekly, if you like, because that schedule does change. And I know you have to plan ahead. We had a bridge in Montgomery, Monroe County where we made a minor impact on their public transit, too, and we were coordinating weekly, so.
Big bus coming.
Anybody else?
Do you have a slide of the runaround?
Do I have a slide of the runaround? I do not have a slide, but I can provide you a drawing, not similar to the runaround.
We have a drawing in our book. Just wondered if you had a slide to put up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we all got educated a little bit there. So we will continue on the agenda to item number two, which is the bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the November check reconciliation in the amount of $951,619.03. In the December bill listing, the amount of $1,112,896.97. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Move on to item three, the agency meeting schedule. The 2018 agency meeting schedule will remain identical to the 2017 meeting schedule of the Board of Commissioners and Township agencies. Board of Commissioners will meet each month on the second Wednesday at 7:30 here in the Springfield Township Building, and on the Monday preceding the second Wednesday at 7:00, also in the Springfield Township Building. A complete list of the meeting schedule is available upon request. The meeting schedule will be posted and also advertised in the Springfield Sun, and you can also find that on the website. The next item is the organizational meeting. By statute, the Board of Commissioners is required to organize the board through the election of officers and the designation of the financial institution of the township on the first Monday in January of even-numbered years, unless that date falls on a legal holiday. In 2018, the first Monday in January is New Year's Day, and therefore, the organizational meeting will be held on the following day, Tuesday, January 2, 2018, at 7:00 in the Springfield Township Building. Move on to item number five. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1440, a resolution declaring that the intent of the Board of Commissioners to follow the schedules and procedures for the disposition of records as set forth in the Municipal Records Manual of 2008, and in accordance with Pennsylvania Act 428 of 1968, whereby acts of disposition of records shall be approved by a resolution of the governing body of the municipality. A schedule of the records to be disposed of is attached to and made a part of the resolution. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
This is something that we do because, as our record, old records age out, this gives us the ability to dispose of them. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Next, we move to library committee membership. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Kathleen Clemm, John Chapman, and Kate McGrannahan, the last one being an alternate, to new three-year terms of service as members of the Springfield Township Library Advisory Committee. The new three-year terms of service shall expire on December 31, 2020. On this date, the township received a letter of resignation from Janet Waxman, a member of the Springfield Township Library Advisory Committee, who served on the committee for 10 years and also led the Friends of the Library. Ms. Waxman will continue to serve as a friend of the library and continue to secure additional funding opportunities and gift to the Springfield Township Library. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I would like to thank Ms. Waxman for a decade of dedicated service to the Springfield Township Library Advisory Committee. But that began with a motion, so may I have that motion for the three members? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. The Library Advisory Board has made some minor adjustments to their bylaws, which we must approve, and that's what we're about to do, I think. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the updated set of bylaws of the Springfield Township Library Advisory Committee, last revised October 5, 2017. The subject of the amendment to the bylaws memorialized the fact that Township Commissioner Liaison is a non-voting member of the Library Advisory Committee. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And you'll notice, that was October 5, 2017. We had finished the process then, but there was just that one nit as to who was a voting member. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. And that completes my report. I will turn it over to the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Shum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report this evening.
Thank you. We then move to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two motions this evening. The first one concerns right-of-way at Orland Mill Road and Hawkswell Circle, and the other one concerns mini casinos. So, first, Resolution Number 1441, the developer of the Springfield Manor development has offered for dedication the public improvements at the development to Springfield Township. The office of the township engineer has inspected the public improvements and concurs that the development is finished and in good order. Therefore, I move the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1441, a resolution accepting the deeds of dedication for public use, one, the ultimate right-of-way of Orland Mill Road, and, two, Hawkswell Circle in the Orland section of Springfield Township. Authorization is hereby given for the proper township officials to execute the maintenance agreement for public improvements, as well as easement agreement for the emergency access driveway at the Springfield Manor development. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
A next, Resolution Number 1442, Pennsylvania Act 42 of 2017 authorized the placement of 10 Category 4 casinos within the Commonwealth. Category 4 casino is a mini casino with not less than 300 or more than 750 slot machines and table games. Category 4 mini casinos may not be located in a county housing a Category 3 resort casino. At the November 16, 2017, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, the board passed a resolution confirming the prohibition of all Category 4 mini casinos in Montgomery County due to the existence of the Valley Forge Casino, which is a Category 3 resort casino. While the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners protected the immediate interest of the municipalities within the county, in the event that the Valley Forge Casino would close without a Springfield Township resolution prohibiting a mini casino, there is a possibility that a mini casino could be placed within Springfield Township after the closure of the Valley Forge Casino. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1442, a resolution prohibiting a Category 4 mini casino within Springfield Township. Resolution Number 1442 shall be delivered to the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board no later than December 31, 2017. And that is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Standish. We move on to zoning committee, Commissioner Daley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do I have to move the microphone over?
It helps.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I give my report, after 12 years of serving on the Board of Commissioners, I want to exercise my right of personal privilege and update the residents of Ward Six on the election. I've been asked by several residents, my phone's been blowing up for about two weeks as to, over a month, as to the status of the election. Tried to put out some posts on social media, but that usually turns into some type of firestorm, so I thought maybe in this setting, it'd be a little bit better. Overview, the campaign for Ward Six was extremely positive and not negative. It began with my opponent, Jonathan Cobb, who's actually out in the hallway, if you'd like to come in. Jonathan posted a Facebook post when we were dealing with the Wawa situation over in Sunnybrook. Jonathan listed, "I would also like to say that the ward commissioner for the immediate area affected by the proposed Wawa, Ward Six, James Daley, who also happens to be the chair of the zoning committee, was a thoughtful advocate for the community and surrounding area. He's always been accessible and quick with responses to inquiries. If anybody has any immediate questions, he is a good place to start." Notwithstanding, again, I tried to do, all my literature has always been positive. I have never ran a negative campaign for a few reasons. One, we have children. Our children play together, our children go to the same schools, and Mike obviously knows that. He has small children as well right now, and we're going to see each other again. However, as I was dedicating, we were dedicating a park over in Orland, on November 4, a mailing went out, which I would consider a mail, a negative mailing, which called into question the integrity of this board on several projects, including the tank car, the sanitary sewer system, my dedication and concern to the safety of the folks in Arleham and Sunnybrook Road, and other issues in the township that is always another part of the story which is not given. With respect to the sanitary sewer system, I've been carrying around with me for three years a list of all the meetings we've had, the accusation was lack of transparency and shortsightedness of this board. This board was almost unanimous in the sale of the sanitary sewer system, paid for almost three quarters of this project that we're sitting in right now, saved us millions of dollars down the road with respect to replacing our sewer system, maintenance and whatnot, and I could go on and on. We had over 24 meetings, all advertised, publicized, e-blasted newspapers, social media, eight separate votes advertised, and all those meetings were previously followed by a workshop meeting on the Monday, which would precede that. So I don't know where anyone who calls in that question was during that time. We're all busy, but to miss 24 meetings, eight votes, and whatnot, and say that this board, led by me as president, Jeff Harbison as president, and before that, Bob Gillies as president, for lack of transparency is just absurd. So, moving on, I think it's just a little sad that a lot of battles that we fought together, this board, previous boards, with respect to stormwater management, property rights, keeping taxes lower, we lowered taxes about three times in the last 12 years, that at this juncture, we have to fight for the right to people to actually vote. I see someone, I believe you're from the League of Women Voters, I see your pin there. I'm glad you're here tonight, because I actually was going to mention you later. On election night, it's a democratic process to never ask or never question why somebody votes. It was a tough campaign. There's a lot of national issues, a lot of voter apathy, and just general democracy. But vote came in, I was down two votes. I was surprised that there was zero absentee ballots that night, given the fact that three of the absentee ballots, applications, I actually secured or made sure that those folks had received them. Some of them are personal friends. Some of them, my wife is known for years. One of the gentlemen, who's in a wheelchair, who probably got his absentee ballot for Meals on Wheels this time, his vote's not going to count. All three of these individuals signed affidavits that they mailed their votes on time, that they placed them in the mailbox, and for some reason, and I don't call into question anybody at the county's integrity, it could be an error, but for some reason, there are two of the ballots, another lady who's also in a wheelchair and can't walk, senior citizen, didn't make it there until November 6, two of them. And we could argue over postmarks, we can argue whatnot. One of the ladies, who actually was on vacation at the time, who, again, I alluded to earlier, that Ms. Davis followed up with her absentee ballot, because she's a registered Democrat. I never knew when she was registered. I never asked her over 12 years. She was the second door I ever knocked on. First one didn't answer, because the first guy didn't want to answer the door. They're the reason why we did the Orland Mill project, Hammond and Neighbors, because they were getting flooded with water up to their living rooms. So when she said she would do an absentee ballot, she way, and asked to put a sign on my lawn, on her lawn, and told me she hoped by one, I was extremely surprised when her ballot had not made it to the election. So again, she also executed an affidavit. All three affidavits were executed before a judge, a district justice, so I believe them. So, we have to, formal request and informal request to see the ballots from the election board, they weren't provided. Again, I make no judgment on the election board. They have their policies, they have the laws, they do what they, their best for their county as a client. But it got to a point where we weren't even able to see the ballots, to see what the markings are, when they were mailed, if they were mailed, and I think amicably it was tried to done, to look at them. So, two women decided to put on a petition to try and fight- So, two women decided to put on a petition to try and fight for their right to vote, these other three individuals. A petition was filed. It turned out to be defective, because it has to be filed so fast that it was defective. The County Board of Elections made a motion to dismiss. That was joined in by my opponent, Jonathan Cobb. His attorney stood up in the courtroom and made it a point to join in that motion. I would not have joined in that motion. I wouldn't want my first act as a potential Commissioner-elect to be to not only count the ballots, but to even look at them, just to see what the story was. The lawyer for the petitioners asked before the court, "Can we just look at the ballots? We might be out of here in five minutes." That was denied. Again, I make no judgments on the court, I make no judgments on the county, but those folks at that point were denied not only to look at their ballots, but of course, their vote. So after the petitioners issued a subpoena, which was a motion to quash the subpoena for the ballots, after approximately three weeks, and I may be off by a couple days or whatnot, two of the ballots were turned over, the envelopes, and they had one postmark of November 2nd, which was one day before the November 3rd deadline, and the other one after three weeks had a postmark of November 4th. Again, both of these individuals executed affidavits saying they mailed it. The one individual, the gentleman, who my wife has known for 40 years, who got, paid me his ballot from his absentee ballot application from Meals on Wheels, said he executed, according to his declaration, on November 1st. Somehow it didn't get there till November 6th. Had these folks known that there was some screw-up with the system, I'm sure they would have exercised their right to do an emergency ballot. The third individual, what I did too, just for fun, just to see if their ballots would get there in a day, I went to Norristown, and I put an envelope in the mail at the same post office where the people get their mail at the county, and they did it the other way. It was at my house in a day, so it gets there, it works. I then went out more west in the county and tried it again. It also got there in a day, 10 miles further. So I was feeling lucky up in Berks County the other day, but I said, "I'm not going to try my luck." So, and with respect to the lady who lives on Orland Mill Road, and I don't want to use their names, it's in the court file, you can look at it. Her mailbox, where she mailed her mail, according to her affidavit, is on the property of St. Philip and the Fields, which is actually a 62 polling place, 100 feet or so from her house. She placed it in a mailbox, according to her affidavit, on the October 24th. That's two weeks before the deadline. But three weeks after the election, her ballot is nowhere to be found. Again, there's no insinuation, something must have happened, but there's an error. It no fall of the voter. I went to her house after Saturday here, during a snowstorm, and dropped a letter in the mail. And do you know that letter was here on Monday morning from that same mailbox? It's amazing, it worked. And I trusted it so much, I put a note in there that someone thanked me for, and Glenn and Bob, for the Tank Car Corporation, for all the work we did up there. That's how much I trusted that that envelope would get there. It made it there in no problem by Monday morning. So, after the second hearing, the motion was again, the petition was filed, and, you know, I'm aware, I understand how things work, I understand you're building on a previous hearing. The petition was dismissed again. The gentleman was there in the courtroom, he wanted to come up in his wheelchair, he wanted to come to that hearing, and he made it to that hearing because he wanted his vote to count. The merits of the case have never been heard yet. Right now, the petitioners are weighing on what they want to do. These three ladies, there's three ladies now, they've already done their job, they've already fought for these three people to have their votes counted. I was actually going to call upon the League of Women Voters to take a look at it. I was actually going to ask, we sat here six months ago for the redistricting folks, this, not this room, the other room was packed with 200 people, two nights in a row, because every vote counts. I call upon them to look into this. And then, as I alluded to earlier, you look at the counties which they provided. It's a 51% fail rate in Springfield Township for absentee ballots. That's amazing. And in my ward, Ward Six, it's a 60% fail rate. However, one of the overseas ballot that was in our ward had a turnaround time of four days, but someone less than 10 miles from the courthouse never made it there. That's amazing to me. Again, no one calls into question, but something obviously is wrong with the system. And it obviously is not the voter's responsibility to find out what happened, particularly when you're trying to find out what happened, and the petitioners' subpoenas are quashed to try and find out what happened. So, that's where the election stands right now. I'm sure some in the audience may disagree with that, some may be against my assessment, there's a docket, there's a full docket. You have any questions? Two of the petitioners are here, it's my mother-in-law and my wife. Michelle Siscesis is not here tonight. They've done their job. And I asked the board, again, without getting into partisan fights, and I'm not trying to do that, I've enjoyed bipartisan support for 12 years. I had more Democrats come out and vote for me this time than ever were, and they told me they did. And I don't ask somebody when there's four feet of water in their house, what their registration is. Do we?
No.
No. We say, "Let's solve the problem."
We don't care.
That's how I've operated, that's how I've always operated, and I hope to continue to operate that way. If this is my last meeting, and I appreciate everybody's time, and it happens to be, and I hope it's not, but I've had the unique opportunity to serve both public service, both at my professional level and here at the township, and I've been very, very lucky. I want to thank the residents of Ward Six and the township for giving me the honor of serving as Commissioner for 12 years. I have been truly blessed. I thank my beautiful wife Sue, and our children John, Danny, Grace, and Caroline for all their support and patience over the 12 years of allowing me to serve our community. They have sacrificed much, particularly the loss of time with me. Well, maybe not. Maybe they liked me being out. However, no matter if we were on vacation, or late at night, or on a weekend, when a call came from a constituent or someone who stopped us in, say, a restaurant with an issue, my wife and kids all took it in stride and understood that it was part of my responsibilities for our community, and they always understood. I thank my in-laws, my brothers and sisters, my late mom and dad, for their support. I also have to thank Bob and Carolyn McGory. Bob was a former Commissioner, and he's dear, they're dear friends who have always been a mentor, and I hope I've made them proud. I thank former Commissioner Bob Gillies, Commissioner Glenn Shum, for all their help, and former Commissioner Mark Perry, for their support, particularly early on. They taught me the value of addressing residents' concerns early, head-on, and the fact that you can't always say yes to a request. Sometimes the answer is no. I remember Glenn telling me one time, what you try to do is you try to, you make the resident feel respected, even though you may not be able to help them, and that you give the resident an alternative or some way to work through their issue as best you can. Residents have appreciated that honesty, I believe. I love this township, and I also enjoy, and I also am very fond of our staff. I hate using the word staff. I've always hated to use staff. They are friends and colleagues, and their families with lives. I will truly miss seeing them on a regular basis. I'm going to name people, but Don, Mike, Charlie, Chief Pico, Don, Carol, Margie, Nancy, Jim Garrity, Mary Catherine, Rob, Chuck, Robin, and everybody else, and I apologize if I miss somebody, and all the work you've done for the, not only the residents of Ward Six, but the entire community on my behalf. I'm sure you will miss my Friday afternoon emails and my phone calls at the last minute for a matter that somebody had brought up. I promised to call from time to time on Friday afternoons, just for old time's sake. I wasn't checking on everybody, I just, that's when I got a chance to call. I am proud that we have accomplished, and I leave, and I'm, before I leave this tremendous, excuse me, I am proud of all the accomplishments, particularly this new tremendous municipal campus and library that we've created. We have first-class residents and the first-class employees, and they deserve first-class facilities. This facilities will keep our community attractive, attractive place to live and raise a family. Again, my thanks to all the residents. I can go on with the various issues and problems that we have solved together, and many other accomplishments for the residents. I also saw my role first as protecting the health, welfare, and safety of our residents, whether it be flooding, speeding, or unreasonable development. I thank our police and fire and emergency services. I hope you feel that I have supported you with all my abilities. You place yourselves in harm's way to protect our safety, and I thank you. Again, I've had the unique opportunity in my career to represent the state police for many years, and I've worked closely with law enforcement agents from around the Commonwealth in my professional, in my professional career, but our township and our police are second to none. One of the reasons I chose to run again is because I feel law enforcement throughout our country are themselves under attack. I feel they need a voice. While there can be unprofessionalism in any profession, and it needs to be addressed, the overwhelming majority of officers are honorable, dedicated, and put their lives on the line to protect us. Again, our new police station will give them the tools they need to continue to protect us. I thank everybody, and I thank you, and I hope I served you well. Good job. Thank you. And then, now my report. The zoning hearing board did not receive any applications for the month of December, therefore, the December 18, 2017, meeting of the zoning hearing board has been canceled. The next regularly scheduled zoning hearing board meeting will be held on Monday, January 22, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Springfield Township Building. The zoning hearing board will conduct an emergency meeting on December 18, 2017, at 7:00 PM, here in the Springfield Township Building, for the sole purpose of appointing a new interim solicitor for the zoning hearing board. I have one motion, Mr. President. I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township reappoint Megan McDonough to a new three-year term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board. The new term of service shall expire December 31, 2020. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Daley. We came on this together 12 years ago, we've worked together on an awful lot of things, and it's always been a pleasure. I appreciate your zeal and your professionalism, and hope you will remain involved as other former Commissioners have.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm reporting on the recycling for the month, and would like to announce that during the month of November 2017, Springfield Township residents recycled 244.3 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 70.9%. The net costs for the month was $15,892.47. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We move to the Chairman of the Human Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Finally, we move to the Co-Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple items this evening. First is stop signs. Commissioner Graham has reported on considerable concern for motorists not stopping at intersections at various locations within the Summit Valley neighborhood, and asked that formal stop intersections be established at specific locations in the Summit Valley neighborhood. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code Section 107-28, Schedule 5, stop intersections by establishing stop signs at the following locations. One, on Quill Lane at Lantern Lane, on Quill Lane at Summit Lane, on Lodges Lane at Quill Lane, on Gypsy Lane at Lantern Lane, on Lantern Lane at Summit Lane. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
One comment, and what this involves is, these are T-intersections, where the, where the stop signs are going is the dead end into the T, and in certain intersections, so it's not like we're creating four-way stops. But at certain intersections, the way that flows, particularly this neighborhood, people just roll right through, and while we can cite them for failure to yield, or it's a slightly different thing, it's easier if there's a stop sign there, because they're more likely to stop. So this, it actually changes the citation, but the more significant thing is enabling the stop sign to be put there, hopefully will make it safer. Any other questions or comments?
I have just one comment, Mr. President, and I brought this up at the Monday workshop meeting. Will there be stop lines associated with these stop signs?
No. We looked that up, and the PennDOT guidelines, and they're just guidelines, talk about putting these stop bars in locations where you're trying to protect, for instance, at a crosswalk. They could be put in, but PennDOT doesn't necessarily ask you to put them in. They don't prohibit them, but they don't, they don't suggest that you need to put them in. We do have them in locations where they're, where the stop bar is in front of the pedestrian crosswalk, so the people, the cars will stay out of the crosswalk.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. So at this point...
I'm not done yet.
Oh.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. I'm looking at the agenda.
One quick announcement. I'd like to let everybody know that on Saturday, January 20, at 10:30 AM, the Carson Valley Children's Age School will be hosting another gathering with neighbors at the Mother Goose Building. We will be sending out letters from the township to the residents in the nearby neighborhoods. It was well-attended in the fall. This is a quarterly thing we're trying to do. The last meeting actually got some new volunteers for the school from some of the residents, and hopefully, everybody can attend on January 20. The next thing I'd like to say is about the municipal campus. Two years when I came on this board, it was hard to imagine what the three buildings would look like, because when I saw them, they were on paper. After 18 months plus, walking through the construction from the footings to the walls to the cold and wet jail cells with my children, I have to say, these buildings are absolutely beautiful. And I think we got a small portion of the pride enjoyed that the residents saw Saturday at the open house. I was absolutely astonished by the turnout, especially on a snowy day. I'd like to thank, first, Mike Taylor, Don Sirianni, for keeping an eye on the project, the attention to detail, keeping us up to speed on the monthly reports. Don Berger, I'd like to thank you also. And then, I know, I don't like to use this word either, I'll agree with Jim here, to the staff, public works employees, the administrative employees, and the libraries employees for being extremely patient through this process. And when it's all said and done, this is something the residents are going to be proud for the next 20 years. Also like to not forget former Commissioners and the Advisory Committee who worked four-plus years hard on this project. Last thing for you, Jim. For the last 24 months that I've been on this board, 20 or so we've shared at this end of the table, I'd just like to thank the comments, questions, guidance on issues, extra knowledge on situations, and I would probably be doing a disservice to the residents of Ward One for your time as President and even sitting on this board, dealing with me personally as the advocate for a lot of the flooding concerns, and for not turning a blind eye like some did to us in handling that attention head-on and getting the work done, and I would like to thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And... And the joking around down here, right?
Yes, yes. That wasn't caught on camera. And I'm assuming Saturday nights I will see you in church.
Yes. Does that conclude your report?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you. One other point of order on the municipal open house, which was great, and many of you, I know, were there. We've had questions about when will people be able to see the private areas, mainly the police and public works, again. We've talked about that. We don't have a date at this point, although one of the things that we liked was the concept of maybe making it a yearly event, that we would have a yearly open house. Because I think it's, it's eye-opening and informative to go see how this works and understand how public works works, what are the different responsibilities they have, and you know, where is the salt kept, how are the trucks kept up to date, and how it tends to be really, or much neater than one might think over there, and how do they work? And the police station is even more interesting, because we all sort of like cop dramas, and to see where the, where the interrogation room is, and how the jails are set up, and there are four cells in there, and the detective's room, and the, where the morning squads get their briefings. That's... in there and the detectives' room and where the morning squads get their briefings. That stuff's just fun and it's not something you can just walk in and do. So we'd like to make that a recurring thing because the more people understand government, I think, the more we all benefit. So that's what I have there. And now, remember, we're doing three different meetings. So at this point, I would entertain, and we'll have public comment, more public comment, a motion to close the business meeting. Do I have such a motion?
Sure.
Do we have...
Oh.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. So now, out of that, now we're going to move into the number 14, which is the budget We are into that. The purpose of the budget hearing is being held in compliance with Section 1701 of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code as last amended. The sole purpose of the budget hearing is for the Board of Commissioners to receive public comment on the 2018 preliminary budget. Legal requirements associated with the budget hearing have been met by publishing a budget notice in the Springfield Sun issues of November 12th and 19th, 2017, and making the budget available for public review in the Township Building and Library Building. Budget statistics. The 2018 preliminary budget of Springfield Township is $17,243,218. Reposed real estate rate is 4.219 mils and earned income tax of 1.0% with an annual refuse service fee of $209.75. At this point, we are open for any testimony from the public. Do we have any?
Again, I think that as we are, the adoption of hearings are the same night. It's a normal tradition where these commissioners will go back and listen to what we have to say at the hearing and reflect on what we can come up with. And this will be Jim's last, potentially be Jim's last meeting. I want to thank everyone. I did some review of the budget and I looked at some of the income items and I thought they were a little light on projections, which would cost to be $340,000, $10,000 added cost. There's a real estate tax, with some of the transfer taxes, some of the sales coming up, and so we're probably moving forward. We probably write about $100,000 revenue there. Business privilege tax is probably 50 to 100,000 light, earned income tax, paying about 50 to 100,000. Cable TV comes about $20,000 light. That's $320,000 that you could move to the revenue side and offset any tax increase. It would be about a $44,000 shortfall. I noticed that the carryover from last year's budget was going to be cost $874,000. So it took $44,000 out of that. You still have over $800,000 carryover and you wouldn't have any of these taxes. So that would be the first thing I noticed. So I hope you look at just that and not reduce taxes at all. I did have some question on the capital reserve. I believe all the funding is in place for the new campus. Is that correct?
Yes.
So none of the reserves for the new campus. Correct?
No, there's still some in there because we'll continue to pay the bills.
How much of the reserves is for, because you have five million, $500,000 reserve. I thought that was not part of the loan. I thought the loan, the bill for the loan is separate.
We still have, call it $3.2 million that we still have to pay on that.
So three million of that is a loan that we're paying?
We have to, we, yeah, no, no, no. That's, I mean, the capital reserve that we had set aside to pay off the, to pay for the contractors. So there's still $3.2 million in the capital reserve to do that.
Don, I think, how much of the capital reserve, how much is the total capital reserve?
We believe it'll be in the range of 6.9 million.
And how much of that still has to be paid for the municipal campus building?
3.2.
So this leaves us with what, three something?
3.7.
3.7.
Yeah, and as both of you know, we have lived in the capital reserve a lot of projects and programs that we're either saving for or that we have set aside for. So that's where most of that money goes.
Okay, because, but, so 3 million of the capital reserve right now is for this campus still?
3.2, yeah.
And it's not in the budget?
Right.
Okay, I didn't understand it.
The debt, the debt payment, you know, on the loan, on the $10 million loan, most of that's in the budget. The board has subsidized the debt payment last year by, I don't know, $280,000 and this year reduced it in half, still subsidizing $141,000 from the capital reserve.
Okay, because another alternative would be to, you know, increase those taxes that I mentioned earlier, and if you're worried that, you know, it was being a little aggressive, you could do less and you could pull some from the capital reserve because right now you have a full new campus, you're not going to have any major emergency. We sold the sewer authority, which we held $4 million aside for because there was a potential $4 million issue that we had to pay for that's not there. So there really isn't a large need for capital reserve for, obviously, the new campus because you have warranties on all items. So you could take some of that overpayment from taxpayers for years going back that may build up the capital reserve and offset it slightly to keep the budget at zero was one of the things I was looking at. Because we also have a million dollars in the highway, which is set up for something. And then finally, I was just wondering about the pension, if you had made any progress on potentially changing a pension plan for current employees going forward. I know that you have passed for new employees that are not in a pension plan, but, because right now, the taxpayers, you know, funding the pension plan this year by 37% of this total salary. I mean, if we came up with a better plan, you could pay people more, have them contribute to their own 401K-style plan and still save the taxpayers money, everybody could win. So hopefully you'll still look at the pension plan. But I would prefer that you would keep the budget at zero. And I know it's hard tonight, you already have, you know, the vote on it tonight, so you won't have time to reflect, but that's what I would recommend. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comment at this point? I thought he was coming up. Okay, so at this point, all testimony taken at this budget hearing will be considered by the Board of Commissioners. A special meeting to close the business of 2017 and adopt, potentially adopt, the 2018 budget is, will be happening momentarily, and at that point, we can discuss it. Do we have a motion to close the budget hearing?
Some vote.
Wow. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, now we have finished with item 14 and we go into our final one, which, a different piece of paper here. Do I need a motion to convene the meeting?
No, no, we...
No, we closed, no, we didn't. So I better convene it. So I would accept a motion at this point, even though we're not really in a meeting, but I think we're okay. Accepted a motion to convene the 2018 budget adoption meeting to close the business affairs of the township for 2017 and adopt the 2018 budget. Do I have, that's my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
What are we moving? We're voting to open the hearing because I sort of closed it.
Aye.
Just to make sure we're in session.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we are, now we are in number 15. And I've got these two different scripts I'm following here. Okay. The 2018 budget, you may remember this because we just talked about it, is $17,243,218 with a real estate tax rate of 4.219 mils and an earned income tax rate of 1.0%. The average household with a real estate tax assessment of $175,400 will realize an increase of $44.55 in the real estate tax. The refuse service fee will increase by $3.19 with the annual fee set at $209.75. So we, at this point, if there's any more public comment, we would accept that.
Will?
It's hard to say no, isn't it, Bob? And now, I would, actually, we're gonna, we can do the Flower Town, we'll do these one at a time. So if you have comments on them, we can deal with them one at a time. First, we have the Flower Town lease rentals out on the next page. This is Resolution 1443. Has to do with the lease rental from the Flower Town Country Club, whereas the total sum of $105,000 was received as lease rental from the Flower Town Country Club during the calendar year 2017, whereas the sum of $12,500 was paid for insurance on the Flower Town Country Club premises, whereas the sum of $25,566.04 was expended for maintenance and capital improvements to the Flower Town Country Club during the calendar year 2017, whereas the sum expended for insurance and maintenance was less than the sum received in rent. Now therefore be it resolved that the balance of $66,933,096 would be transferred from the general fund for the capital expense on the Flower Town Country Club property to the capital reserve fund. So that is my motion. That's moving our operating surplus into capital reserve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question. Well, we talked about the other night, the additional rent that was realized, have we been paid for that yet?
No.
Okay, so if it was paid as per the lease in April, which is approximately $26,000, that would now be being transferred into the capital reserve.
Right.
So when do we expect that?
We expect it before the end of the year at this point.
Okay.
We, you know, we've been pushing for half a year.
No, I know, but why, I just, if, but we're not, because it hasn't been physically given to you.
Right.
We're not going to count it as receivable or anything like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Next, we come to 1444, which is amending the 2017. That's closing this budget. I don't need to read the where, I'll read it all. Whereas, the First Town, First Class Township Code provides that township commissioners may at any time by resolution make a supplemental appropriation for any lawful purpose for many funds on hand to be received within the fiscal year and not appropriated to any other purpose. Whereas, unencumbered balances remain in certain expenditure items which may be transferred to other items which may have been over-expended, whereas revenues have been received in excess of budgetary projections which may be appropriated for general purposes. Now therefore be it resolved that the 2017 budget be adjusted and the following supplemental appropriation and transfer be made according to the attached schedule, which is pages and pages. So that's just moving the overages and under, because I'm not going to read that and we'd be here full-blown tomorrow. Are there any, that is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record unanimous vote. And then, the next one, this is, with the exception of the refuse fee part, this is the budget itself. Do I just make a motion to approve this? We've already read the details.
You can make a motion to approve the ordinance number 952.
Yep. So this is ordinance number 952, setting the tax rate for the year 2018 and appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the township government here and after set forth during the current fiscal year. And I make a motion that we pass such ordinance as we have discussed in the budget hearing. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, with respect, as always, I appreciate Don and Mike and all the department heads working on the budget. However, I will be voting against adopting this budget for various reasons as I stated over the last few years. This would be approximately the third tax increase in a four-year period. Again, for reasons I set forth in the previous two years, I did, we did vote for a tax increase in prior years to begin the municipal campus. And for, again, reasons I've stated before, I'm not going to belabor it. Also, I believe over the last few years, and I've said this before, we've missed an opportunity to renegotiate the lease at the Flower Town Country Club. I don't think as much of the Township Board of Commissioners put on the leasee. It's a shame. I think that we could have worked out a mutually, a lease that would be mutual and beneficial to both with respect to years and service and financing for the township. Could have been a more dedicated source of income for either projects or part of the municipal campus. I believe the lease, which is how many years old now, is very beneficial to the leasee. And I believe that the township, going moving forward, whether I'm sitting here or not, really needs to look into all the options in the lease with respect to getting the benefits for the residents of the township. The lease can be renegotiated and just within the terms of the lease itself, and that would be my comments.
Yeah, let me just say, on that last point, I agree with you and I hope we can figure out a way to keep you involved. Because I think we can work this out. It's a financial thing, figuring out what's our responsibility and what theirs. We are bound by the lease, but to the extent we have new pools in the mix and we have the flexibility to work that out, and we need to work it out, and you're good at it. So I hope you'll stay involved and we will try and figure out how to do that.
Thank you.
I have a comment...
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. President, I think that you should also emphasize, there was a, you know, we had, during the debate of this budget, there was a debate on how the residents that worked within the township, how they were going to be adversely affected if we did not raise the budget slightly. In other words, those people that work hard within our township and for our township, our township staff, our maintenance crew, our police department, would have been double-dipped if they had not, if we had not had this slight increase. And I thought that was unfair to the people that worked so hard for us. So at first, as you know, I was against the increase because, you know, I don't like to pay taxes as much as anyone else does. However, when it comes to affect the people that work so hard for us, I thought that it should be equitably divided amongst the community in orders for our hard-working township personnel that works hard every day. And I've seen them here 10, 11 o'clock at night for them to get double-dipped. So I think that should be a part of the record for the residents as to why we had to do this slight increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will put the numbers on that in a minute. Are there any other comments? I have just some numbers, if not. Let me go ahead and I'm not advocating, as much as I, I'm a finance guy, I think it helps people to sort of try and put this in perspective. The key number you're hearing is the increase, and it's easy to do it on a per-household basis so that you're not in the world of big numbers, and that's $44.55. What is that on, as a percentage basis? It's, for us, that's a 6.4%, but we are actually less than 10% of your property tax, so, or actually about 10% so that on all your overall taxes, that your property tax bill will actually only go up 0.65% because of this. That's the significance of it. The local service tax, which Eddie mentioned, was a tax that we voted down, and that would involve taking anybody that worked in the township, whether you were a resident or a non-resident, and they would pay a dollar a week as a payroll tax. And if we had passed that, and we didn't, and, see, Bob, we listened to you, that would have, this $44 increase would have been cut basically in half. That was about a $21 impact. Again, I'm not advocating, I'm just trying to throw the numbers out there. If you look at our, that, where does that $44 increase come from? If you look at our budget, our budget, if you add up the increases, you actually have $120 of increases, but there's... a hundred and twenty dollars of increases, but there's offsetting in there. And I just want to give you a sense of where those increases are coming from. There's debt services seventeen dollars, I'll circle back to that at the end. The pension obligation, that went up fifteen dollars a household. The workers' comp, two dollars and seventy-five cents. The general salaries went up twenty-four dollars. The fire incentives and contributions, that went up five dollars. And part of that is we've added a retention program that the state allowed us to do. We give a grant to each of the fire companies, and that went up a couple percent, as it always does. They're all, fire companies are all volunteer, but we now have, the state empowered us to come up with an incentive program for those who respond, and I think, was that twenty-five thousand we put in the budget? So that's five dollars, those two increases. The refuse disposal, that's actually separately accounted for, is a dollar fifty-one. The recycling, three dollars and eighty-two cents. Both of those kind of work into the other, the next thing, but you should still know them. Library, one, a dollar. Recreation, three dollars. Social Security, two dollars. Medical benefits, that's our insurance, seven dollars and forty-seven cents. We're also, there's an eighteen dollar hit on earnings because money for the building, and we've spent that money, and money in the bank isn't making much anyway, so that's a, the amount of investment earnings we have is down fifty, will be down fifty-two percent. That's not really a cause for concern, but it was a source of revenue for us. And then the debt service, the debt service for the twenty-year borrowing we did, which was about ten million dollars, and that would cover tank car, that would cover the seven dollars, and that covers everything we're in here, which was roughly twenty-seven million or so, about twenty million. When the reserve was released on the sale of the sewers, that got us near twenty million. So that debt of that remaining third worked out to about ninety dollars per household per year. And as Don mentioned, rather than just smack us with ninety dollars, and last year we raised taxes fifty dollars per household, rather than just smack us with the ninety dollars, we provided a thirty-six dollar subsidy last year. So fifty-four dollars was borne last year, which is roughly what the increase was. This year, we're subsidizing it by eighteen dollars, which is both eighteen less and leaving eighteen. So that means the impact of the increase is eighteen dollars of that increase. And that also means that next year, so we're bearing seventy-two dollars, also means that next year we'll have to find eighteen dollars before we're fully paying for it. Those are, well, those are just notes I have. Again, just, township does an awful lot of work on this, and seeing how those numbers all add up to those increases to over a hundred dollars, that they worked hard and, you know, okay, we're not going to buy this truck. And I also want to remind those who don't know how we do it, because, Bob, you're probably the only one in the front there who really understands how we do it. We do things differently than most townships, and that is, if we want a new truck or we want anything short of what we're sitting in, we don't borrow money. We save. So that's why we have this capital reserve, is we're going to take four years to put aside twenty thousand dollars to buy some fancy truck. We wait until we've saved it. Rather than borrow the money, you could flip that, but then we'd have more debt, and this puts more discipline on us. It really makes us think about it. And this year, for example, we took one truck and we just delayed it, and that lowered the amount a little bit, but we don't get the truck. So those are just the way we do it. It's the height of conservatism, and I think that's a good way to run the township. Before we did this project, we didn't have any debt, and I think our goal is, we don't want more debt. We have this debt, and it's, we're two years into a twenty-year debt, but our goal isn't, if you go look at other townships, it's very different, and they borrow for this and they borrow for that. And we do here and there borrow for a bridge or so, or depending on our program, but we have very little, and I'm proud of, and Mr. McRory was very proud of that. He still talks about it all the time, and I want to be true to that. I don't think we could build a building that way, but otherwise we could.
Well, I would ask going forward, as we look at the list of the capital reserve projects that we may no longer need.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's where Bob's coming from, that's where some of what I've been coming from. Do we really need the three, seven of the capital reserve now with all this? Can we scale that back so we don't have to keep making these transfers back to the capital reserve every year, which goes into the budget, which adds twenty dollars here, which adds twenty dollars there? So, that's just a disagreement, you know, it's a professional disagreement of how we get there, but that's all I suggest.
Okay.
And the other thing with respect to the local service tax, all I would suggest is whatever the board has constituted next year, as Mike and I have indicated, if we can begin, if it's going to be considered, begin that process in January, February, or March. If it's, I believe it's legally we can do that, as opposed to waiting till finally, whether we adopt it in November, and then we're in the same rigmarole as we were for the last, you know, couple of years, where we're having last minute to decide whether to do the local service tax or portion thereof at the last minute. So I hope the board goes forward with that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just, my only comment would be that I'm, as I've said before, I'm not a friend of large taxes, but my concern is what we've all voiced before, which is, there are always ways of playing with numbers and bringing taxes down, but, you know, at what cost? And what I'm really concerned about is that we do something like that, and then all of a sudden, within one year, two years, we see some gigantic increase that we really can't do anything about. And as we know, we're already borrowing from our general fund in order to sort of ramp up to a higher level anyway. So I'll just sort of throw that out there.
Okay, thank you.
I have a comment just to say that I agree with Jim that we should start this process a little bit more earlier, but I would also suggest that we become, we get more creative ways in order to bring the tax revenues down. I think we need to kind of, people always say that we need to think outside the box. I believe that as this board proceeds forward, we should start trying to find more creative ways with this new stadium that we have. That's a good way of creating revenue in order to keep our taxes down within the revenue, I mean, within the budget. So I think that's a great idea, starting early, and I think it's a great idea that we start becoming more thinking out of the box. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other?
Well, I might as well throw Mike to you. In reference to the local services tax.
Yes.
So I think one, I truly believe it has merit for people that work in our township, use our services, and do not live here. Now, I know we're bound by legislation that we cannot separate people that live and work here. So is there a way to start changing the legislation? I mean, you're our legislative liaison. You understand more about it than certainly I do. How do we go about doing that, to make it fair for the people that live and work here?
Are you still here? Yeah, Steve, could you give us an update of whether that's been looked at?
I'll get back to you.
Well, no, I'm not expecting you right now, Steve. We have a member of-
You don't want to go on the record?
I would have been really impressed if you started saying Senate bill.
Anyway, that's my comment.
No, that's a good point. And let me just dig in a little more as to what the finances are. The local service taxes has nothing to do with spending, it's a question of how do we pay the bills? And right now, we're basically paying the bills through the property taxes. If we switched that twenty dollars per household to the local services tax, it would, property taxes would go down twenty dollars per household. So if you don't work in the township, you would be twenty dollars per household better off. If you do work in the township, you'd be, it's a dollar a week, you'd be fifty-two worse, or if two of you do, you'd be a hundred dollars worse off. There's also, so that's a trade-off between the working person and the non-working person, or those who work outside. And then the third piece of it is, the whole point of it is what Glenn's talking about, is the people that don't live here, that do work here, they're using our police, they're using our emergency services and our streets and whatnot, and they're not paying for it, so that's what the dollar a week is for. And if we enacted it, that is a windfall for us of, I forgot what the number was, one hundred and?
Forty?
Yeah.
First year, it was one seven, one-
One four, one seven, then two something, so that there's, there's that windfall, which that would be about twenty or thirty dollars too that we'd get. But it does change the way, and we discussed this, by law, this is something that has to be voted on in advance, so we already voted on it, and we voted it down. It's just something to think about. It's not changing the whole order, but it is a question of, do we want to shift from the retired people to the working people? And there are great reasons to do it and to not do it.
So next year, this is when the board sets, are you saying, because this has been something constranational on my part, this year we were going to raise taxes and enact the local service tax. So are you saying next year, and I'm not holding you to it, I'm just working it out on my part, that if the local service taxes was enacted in full, do you foresee no real estate?
I would always like to do it that way. In past years, we looked at it, if we do it in March, you can't do it because we've already, we won't know the budget situation.
My question is, if you passed the local service tax and you realize the first year a hundred and sixty, are you saying that will offset the amount of increase of property taxes or eliminate them? Because the last two or three years-
Well, I don't know, I just don't know what next year's budget will look like, yeah.
I just don't want the folks to think that what basically you said, I'm not-
That it's the gold neck.
It's going to be, and it's going to go down twenty dollars next year. It just won't go up twenty dollars or offset.
It's just a source of revenue of twenty dollars, right. It could, anything could happen. And this year, it would have still gone up twenty something dollars.
So everybody knows, the issue is, is forty percent of the folks in the township will be paying the local service.
That work here.
And their property tax, that's our dilemma.
Yeah. And there's not, it's a very academic argument. There's not a right or wrong, as much as we've debated, and it's a four-three split, I'm not convinced I'm right, and I, I don't know. Depends on who you are and where you work, whether you think I'm right. Okay. Any other questions or comments on the budget?
If I'm out of order, say so.
You're out of order.
You are, actually.
I know. I just want to make a comment.
Is it a clarification or a comment?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a clarification, because we're not in public comment.
Yeah, I know, but I'm not public here. This is actually-
Okay. As the tax collector, right.
How much have you, like, taxed in two minutes?
Well, if I was going to speak, I might have to, absolutely.
Okay, well, then, we're going to have public comment, we're going to have public comment in two minutes anyway, so why don't we go to that? I don't want to reopen public comment. Let's, why don't we just wait two minutes then? Any other from the board? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Please record eight five two vote. Hold on. And now we have the refuse service fee, and then we'll let you guys speak again. So the final one is ordinance number, resolution number fourteen forty-five. I move that the refuse service charge or fee effective January one, two thousand eighteen be set at a rate of two hundred and nine dollars and seventy-five cents for each residential dwelling unit, and said service charge or fee shall be imposed on the property owner of record of any residential building containing one or more dwelling units. That's my motion. Do we have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. And now we move back into public comment. Bonnie?
I would agree with you. This really wasn't a public comment. I was commenting as the township treasurer and tax collector. Just as a clarification, I'm glad that you listed the different things that increased, that caused the increase. In many other municipalities, those things are billed separately. So it's just an interesting thing that, you know, we lump it all together, raise the taxes, and other municipalities, they not only raise the taxes, but then they have, you know, a fee for the fire, or the library, or the recreation fee, or things like that. So just so people know, that, you know, it looks like we're raising taxes a lot, but again, like, if you look it up for Dublin, it sort of runs off the page. They have all kinds of separate fees, and the way you guys do it is to just lump everything in. I have no say in how much it is or anything like that. I'm just making clarification for actually the way it's billed and collected. So that's always an option to do that, and many municipalities do it, just the same way we pull out the refuse fee, and that's billed separately, and I remit it separately, and it's all recorded and, you know, kept separate records about how much of what I collect is the refuse fee separate from the taxes. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
And I can send you that, that's a spreadsheet that I made, based on something Mike had made, but I can send it.
Well, you've also made it public here, which is great, but-
Right, but that way you can, you can have it.
Yeah, that's the kind of thing I like to explain to people when they ask where the increase came from, or, you know, what it's going to, but I'm happy to know that, you know, part of it is our fees that are listed separately in a lot of other municipalities.
And my logic is, you know, there's so much stuff in the budget, it's hard to understand. So let's pull out the big numbers, and that's what this is pulling out.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
What?
I was asked the other day on Saturday, what are your hours going to be here at the new township?
I haven't set those up yet for the, for the next year. I have-
Are you having hours here?
Yes.
Okay.
Here or at the library, because I like to have evening and weekend hours, and that's not real convenient here, because I would be here alone.
So, okay. That makes sense, I didn't mean to, oh, go ahead, I have a different question.
So you're saying only evening hours will be in the library, but day hours will be here?
I haven't set it up yet.
Okay, are you having day hours?
Yes.
Because I, two people stuck me in the act me, and one here, because they have, they have to talk to you about something, and I don't know where to tell them. So they'll be-
I have email, I have telephone, I have-
But they want to come in.
Yeah. And I make appointments with people.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you don't know, are you going to have regular hours here?
Yes, it's always listed on the tax bill by law.
So you'll have regular hours here in the township building?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that something we can e-blast out when she's, sorry to jump in?
No, go ahead, no.
Is that something we can e-blast out, her hours, once she has it set?
They're on every bill.
Is it? Okay. Well, I never, my voice takes here, I never see.
They're on, they're on, yeah.
Is there a way we can make it safe for you to be here in the evening?
We'll have to work on that.
Because I'd be happy to sit with you, and, I mean, if it's easier to get more people here to do it.
Could you have hours when we have our advisory committees here?
I was looking, I just haven't set anything up a hundred percent yet. I was looking into being here, like, right before a meeting, a board meeting, knowing that people would be here again. Nothing's written in stone yet. This is all brand new to everybody, including myself. I'm still moving my paperwork in. It's just, it's all a work in progress, so.
Terrific.
I will definitely be.
And then I have a question, I'm not sure if it's for the solicitor or for you, and that is, there's a distinct possibility our, our property taxes will be less deductible next year than they are this year.
Yes, yes.
And is there any way people could prepay?
I know your question. No. The answer is no.
Okay.
I can tell you why. I am not warranted to collect for two thousand eighteen until two thousand eighteen. I have to close out two thousand seventeen. The date that I do that with the county is January eleventh this year. We already know the date, that we have the appointment. I have to settle with the township and the school, and then I go to the county and settle. So it's impossible to collect next year's taxes. I don't, I, I mean, you just voted on the millage.
Right.
The county has not voted yet on their budget, and I have to close out. And we have a lot of new tax collectors coming in, you can't pay this year's-
True, who would you pay? Yeah.
You can't pay this year's tax collector when there's a new one coming in, January second. There's a lot of reasons, but state law says absolutely not, so.
And I think some of that's got put back in. Let's hope so.
Yeah. But I have had a lot of questions about that, so thank you for asking that question.
Great. Well, thank you. Do we have any other public comment at this point? This is a hat trick?
Just so you know, if the revenue does come in more as anticipated in the last couple
couple of weeks, because it's a new term, new budget, you can look at the budget next, your first meeting, and change it if you end up with $400,000 more than you thought you were going to have. There you go.
Thank you, that is a correct statement of the law. There being no other, Dave, are you coming up? Okay.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to say, it's a beautiful facility, and it was, I have the tour, and my name's Dave Mickelbacher, Redford Road, by the way, on Saturday, and I think your idea of having one every year is a great idea, you should really look into that. And I just wanted to say publicly that I want to thank Commissioner Shum, Commissioner Daley, former Commissioner Gillies, the advisory committee, and everyone who really worked hard to get this done. I know there was some opposition to spending this money, and I just want to thank them for their hard work, to see it through, and now everyone can enjoy this beautiful facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have to piggyback on that, to be, even though I wasn't elected during the time, I was not about, I was against this building being built, I thought the township was spending too much money. I am going on record to say I've done a complete 180. This is a beautiful facility, and it gives us better resources in order to be better servants to the community, because that's what leadership is all about, servitude. And with these new facilities that we have, we will be able to service the community immensely more effectively. So, I was wrong.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, please, I need a second, we have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Return.
Fine.
Me was screaming, I had to stop.